We're going to bring to order the October 29th meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. The first thing on our agenda is the Personnel Committee. Would you like to come on up?
Yep. I do have some handouts for.
Good luck, lovely.
Thank you.
I'm here. So this is our review of the, um, the process for determining what the compensation will be for the town employees for fiscal year 2020. So I, I used the former letter from the Board of Selectmen that you, you used in the past, but I also added some things to it. So in terms of broad principles, um, in establishing a compensation policy, we have been guided by the following principles. Same, maintenance of staff and service levels, consideration of the provision of step increase of raises and cost of living adjustment, adjustments in a way that is consistent with economic conditions and the town's ability to meet expenditures on a sustainable basis. Assessment and market analysis of positions to maintain position compensation, internal equity and appropriate market rates. Effective financial management of revenues, capital and operating costs, as well as consideration of salary and wage, associated expenditures and any related costs to the residents of Berlin. I think one of the things we thought about was in terms of, we happened to get our tax bills and be at the assess, when the assessors met with the Board of Selectmen. And one of the concerns that we did have with, is our residents' taxes going up. And for the average home, they, they went up about $700. So we kind of took that into consideration as well. Uh, we looked at the Consumer Price Index for Cambridge and Boston, because I understand that's what we had been done in the past. And it was 3.3 percent. One of the things that we talked about as a committee was Cambridge and Boston may not be our, our locality that we want to consider.
Using.
Using, but, um, in itself, instead of just kind of averaging it out with. So we looked at Worcester as well. And Worcester's Consumer Price Index for the 12 months ending in, this past June was 2.6. I also attached in your packets, the very last attachment is, or no, I'm sorry, the next to the last attachment is, um, some of the towns in, in the state and what they are going with for COLA adjustments. And this was very, very helpful in terms of going on the MMPA, Cost of Living Adjustment Survey that they had. And it gives you some idea on fiscal year 20, what all the towns are doing. And I did call Boylston, Boylston did call me back and they believe they're going with 2% and that's on here. And Bolton has not, they had not determined as yet what they were going with. And you can see some of these towns are kind of all over the place in terms, but the average, uh, if you average most of them all out, um, comes to about 2.25 percent. So that was one of the things that we took a look at. So our recommendation at this point in time is that the Personnel Committee recommends um, a cost of living adjustment of about, of 2.25 percent. Also on step increases, we did take a look at that. And, um, I couldn't get an answer from people as to whether steps happen, whether they don't happen. Um, I was trying to think of 2.7 percent, that was last year, and 2.2 percent, which are the steps, and I thought to myself, that's 5%. And that is, in today's economic environment, I, I honestly, I haven't heard of those kind of increases in 15 years. I, I was really taken aback. But at the same time, I know we need to retain people. I know we need to try and do what we can for people. So one of the things that we did do was, um, look at some of the positions themselves and see where we were paying and see if we were paying appropriately. So, um, on the backside, it said that we looked at, um, adjustments for some people. So although not everybody would get a, we're recommending that not everybody get a step increase, but that we consider adjustments, um, in addition to the COLA. So, um, I have attached for you the, uh, new classifications. And I did actually two pages of it because the minimum wage changes. On 1-1, uh, 20. Um, yeah, 7-1-19, yup. I have to think about it for a minute with the fiscal years, you know? So what we did was on this, the very first page, it says on the top Town of Berlin Personnel Classification Spreadsheet, we, um, made this one from July 1st, 2019 to 12-31, 2019. And you can see the $12 as the minimum wage then. But then the second page, the minimum wage goes up to 12-75. So that, this would go from 1-1-20 to 6-30-20. So that'll include some of the, um, positions that are in the, um, that are below minimum wage. Mainly, it's mainly the pages at the library that, that assist. And it would be, um, the Council on Aging.
Drivers?
Yes, correct. So, um, it would include those. So the market analysis that I did on some of the positions, and that was the last attachment. I really, um, this is from the Massachusetts Municipal Association.
This, oh no, this one.
The very last.
Last one.
So as you can see, what this is, is that, um, I tried to plug in towns that were similar to us in such ways as, um, whether it be, I do have all the populations of these towns as well. Although they're not 3,000 people, um, I was trying to come to towns that are the closest to us. And, um, so it gives a minimum salary, a maximum salary, the actual salary, as well as I added a column hourly rate, so that we could compare it to our, our people here. So some of the things, recommendations that I have for changes, this information will be important to you in terms of taking a look at. So that, so here, the item that has the yellow in it, that, those are our recommendations in terms of what we believed should be the rates of people going forward. And, um, we're, we're just recommending them. And we know that, um, that they may not get approved or what have you. But I do want to bring up a couple of them. We have not shared this information with anybody. The very first per, uh, position on the list, the Town Accountant. That, last year, a recommendation was made to bring that position up, but it did not go through FINCOM.
Right.
So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Same with the second position. And there was just one other position that fell into that category, and that was the Assistant Town Clerk. So we've made some recommendations here on what we believe to be a, a fair and, and market price for each of the positions. And, um, there are a couple that we've recommended step increases on, because I don't, I don't have the data yet. I tried to get the data off the website and there wasn't much there for, um, the admin, for the police and fire. We wanted to look at that, you know, a dual admin like that. And there wasn't anything in the surveys that Tom and I could find. But most of the other positions I think you'll find in here, in, in this comp information. I can get into more details if you'd like, but I, um, I didn't know how much you wanted me to.
Did you find that basically we're on?
Oh yeah, I think, I think we're doing very well. I am very, very pleased with what I see. I mean, um, and that's why I thought, you know, if people, do they get steps every year? Do they not get steps every year? And it, it appears that everybody's in, in good stead in terms of where they should be in their range. But I also, um, again, making the recommendations in yellow that I, I think are, are the positions that are behind the eight ball. So I'm happy to make any revisions that you might think unnecessarily, but, um.
Well, maybe we need some time to look it over and.
Okay, alright.
And the one, one area I, I know that we have some problem with is, um, and it's partially due to the workoff program, but the COA bus drivers.
Yes, yes.
My understanding is ours are paid much less than the neighboring communities, which makes it hard for us to hire drivers.
Okay, that was one that I didn't, I wasn't able to get up. And actually, it really wasn't on here. And I did make a note on Holly Loop's position. Recommend COLA until the COA Director, until, um, compensation data can be found for that.
Yeah, I, I found at some point, and I'm trying to think, maybe I asked.
I thought you came in and had data though.
I did, so I'm trying to think where I'd pull it up.
Okay.
It was either a search or it was talking to COA Directors.
Okay.
Let me see what I can find.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But mostly all the town drivers, are they full-time? They don't do a workoff program?
I don't think they do a workup program. Um, which makes it really hard because if you're out of town, you can't do a workup program.
That's what we were trying to figure, because it's a paid position.
So I don't know how we, how we come to terms with that, but I know that we, we are having problems finding and keeping COA drivers.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, so some sort of solution.
Yeah, okay. And I do know, and I did, um, of course add it to this in terms of the minimum wage increase and then another minimum wage increase. But if we, if we get additional data, absolutely. I mean, the goal is to try and retain the people you have, as well as bring in new people. And you're not, um, there's no compression on the other people. And that's where I've found has been the tough part, because there have been years that, um, you know, in, in an organization, when the people that have been there for many years don't get increases, and then somebody comes along and brand new to the organization and gets brought right in. And these people, you know, they may have, um, 13 years of experience, but for four years, they didn't get an increase. And, and I'm going through this in my own employer right now. So they're getting paid as if they were, um, like nine years. And somebody else walking in, new in the door, is getting the 13-year rate. And that's, that's been tough, tough to, um. So that was one of the things we tried to be very conscientious of. And I think the internal equity among people, looking at each of the individuals within certain positions, is very, very good, very good. I think that, um, I think.
Good to hear.
I think it's very, a very generous, um, program here. And it's really great, because I think it tends to keep people here, or at least I hope it does. I did not, um, I wasn't sure how you wanted the committee to handle the fire piece. We did not dig deep there, because we, we weren't sure. So I didn't want to, I'm happy to go into those, Tom and I can dig deeper. But, uh, we hadn't done that for you, so.
What have we, what have we been doing in the past?
I, I think he probably recommends.
Okay. I mean, if anything, I'd recommend the COLA, you know, but I don't, I don't know.
Budget.
Right.
And he puts people into that.
That's what we kind of talked about, was the COLA.
The COLA, because it's, it, you got all different, different grades at different positions. So it's very hard to give this one a step, this one not a step. Especially in that department, because you got so many different, bigger head departments, you know, all the way down. So it's very hard, so it, it, we agreed, say, hey, just take the 2%.
Yeah.
Because it would be harder for you guys to try and figure it out too.
So that would be our recommendation on that side, without getting into each of the individual positions.
Yeah.
And there's going to be a time that, um, because I didn't, going on to that, um, Massachusetts Municipal Group website, I was able to pull up some stuff on, on different positions for Fire Chief and that sort of thing. So I do have those available and we can look at those a little closer when the time comes, when we look at that, or even Town Manager, some of those.
Have, have you had any issues that maybe we need to talk about together, or?
Trying to keep up.
Yeah.
Trying to keep up, because this was a lot, a lot. This, I, I spent, well, Tom and I, I should say, spent over 40 hours on this last week.
Well, she spent a lot of time down the island doing it on the computer. So she had peace and quiet.
It's okay, it's alright.
Nobody to bother her.
But it's a lot, it's a lot for, um.
Like knowing she, why you guys wanted to dump it.
Well, no.
No, no, no.
But it's, it's a lot of information to determine.
You can't do it well when you have all the other stuff to do.
Right, and, um, so the other thing is, you know, when, when our new Town Manager or Town Administrator comes on board, I think that, uh, it'll lighten up a little bit, but at the same time, you know, guidance and advice.
Right.
But, and I know we have other things on our plates that you've given us, but I know this was the priority, priority that you wanted.
So there just a few, uh, reviews that are outstanding?
There were actually, uh.
Two, really?
Two, uh, two employees that are, are not like department heads or anything, and those are in the Assessor's Office. I haven't received those two yet. Uh, let's see, what other ones did we not get? I think all the rest were in the, in the pages.
Correct. Look at the library, didn't we have?
The, yeah, the library page.
Yeah. Wasn't that the other one?
People, those were the.
They were meeting later or something, so we.
And all the rest of them are, are department heads, pretty much. So, and I understand that's part of, um.
Yeah, we're working on it.
I know.
We are.
I know, but everybody did pretty good. And I did put the, um, on here, I did put what their performance evaluation grades were, just so that you'd have an idea. And I, I will give them to the Administrative Assistant for filing, if you need to deter, look at them or whatever.
Okay.
So, a lot of work.
One other thing on, um, the agenda was the COA bus driver.
Yep.
Jenny Zuckertinsky.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I didn't read that until last night, so.
That's alright.
Is, is the money in that budget for her to finish out this year?
Hmm, only till, I think she may have done her hours though.
She did her workoff hours.
Correct.
But yes, they have money in their budget, they are required to pay.
That's the only thing that we discussed, we said, hmm.
You shaking your head, no?
But, I mean, it's either that or the bus stops running, because they can't pay her anymore.
Yeah, so we have to find out from her, if there's in her budget to pay her for the remainder of that year.
Right.
Correct.
My understanding is it's, there is in the COA budget, but you'd have to verify, there's nobody here from COA to.
Okay.
Alright, if that, if there is.
If the money's there, then you need it.
We need to start paying her 10-31.
Okay, alright.
So we'll have to find out tomorrow and.
Because they sort of anticipate this is going to happen with the full-time drivers, because there's a limit to it.
Is it just her, why?
Right now, it's just her who's reached her.
Right now, it's just her.
Is there somebody else coming up behind her, do you know of? You know what I mean? She's not the only bus driver, is she?
No.
No.
Well, that's.
Well, George doesn't do workoff, George is actually on wages. He does most of the driving.
Okay.
And I think, do they have one other, maybe? They have a lot of people who do it sporadically. I think Jenny's the one who's been.
Doing it most, George, okay. Because if there's another one coming up in another month, let's take care of it now.
Right.
You know?
They did not mention.
This is the two of them to sign?
They're not.
Do you want me to give the draft to them?
I drafted a letter for you that the Personnel Pol, the Personnel Committee would historically have signed if they were approving of that hire.
So we can find out tomorrow? You want us to pre-sign it and then?
Yup, you want to do that, it'd be easier.
Yes.
If you want to vote and approve a contingent on there being adequate funding, when, when you confirm that with Council on Aging.
Okay.
Because they actually, the, um, they asked for that to be letter effective tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll sign it.
May I?
Good thing you don't have the creepy clown pen, huh?
I don't have creepy clown pen. It may be the hair, the pen's full of my hair, but you know.
If there's anything else, um, that the Board of Selectmen, if, if there was anything in particular that you were looking at or thinking of that you would like us to look into, we can do that. And if you have any questions at all, we're happy to.
Answer, if we can.
And if you know of any third person that's looking for.
I was going to ask you.
I, I put it out there.
Okay.
Yup, yup. It'd just, uh, be wonderful to get a third person. It really is important.
Share the work.
Right.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Make sure you enjoy your cake.
I will, I will. Claire will be by tomorrow, you get the light on, or Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
Okay.
Alright, um, so, I think we're going to close the Selectmen's meeting and open the Earthworks Board Hearing.
Oh, you just opened the public hearing.
Public hearing, alright. And, the Board of Selectmen, uh, is, are you, are you here for it? Okay, come on down. Um, the Board of Selectmen, acting in its capacity as the Berlin Earthworks Board, will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 29th at 7:00 PM in the Town Office Building 206, 23 Linden Street, Berlin, Mass. To consider the application of WDA Design Group on behalf of North Bridge, no, Riverbridge, North LLC of Berlin, Mass. and the NRP Group LLC of Cleveland, Ohio, for an earthworks permit for the importation of up to 26,000 cubic yards of earth material in furtherance of its planned construction of 204 apartments.
Good evening, Larry Green from WDA. I got presents, I got the green cards, I don't know why.
Yep.
Give those to you. I have a copy of the newspaper as well. So again, my name is Larry Green from WDA. I'm here, as you stated, I'm here on behalf of Riverbridge North LLC and the NRP Group. I request an earth import permit for approximately 26,000 yards to basically fill a portion of the Riverbridge Project. If you recall, when Riverbridge was permitted, it was a mixed-use development, such that the front of the site was going to be designed as a retail component and in the rear of the site being a residential component. As you stated, the residential component is seven buildings entailing 204 apartments and associated clubhouse, gear garages, garages, pump building, dog park and the like. That's kind of the design elements. If you can envision the site topographically, you know, basically River Road West acts as the high point of the site, basically the site does this to the rear of the site, kind of basically high to low. So basically, the request to import the materials to basically to fill the rear of the site. Filling the rear of the site allows us to provide, you know, adequate vehicle traffic, safety, infrastructure layout, stormwater management, stormwater conveyance, site, site improvements and the like. This fill material, at this time, that their primary trucking route will be from, from 290, they'll come off the highway, come into the first rotary, come by the new retail building, kind of basically dump and run, and come back out and go back on 290. We have, we will providing dust, dust control and street sweeping as needed. I apologize, at this time, I can't tell you where the dirt's coming from. They had not made that final selection, and nor have they made the final selection on the site contractor. But once you have that, I have the information, I can relay that to the board.
Okay.
And that's, and as I said, I'm here requesting the imported 26,000 yards. That's under your Article 12 of your general bylaw.
Right.
That's a quick, quick summary.
Does the board have any questions?
I spoke to Joe today and he felt that this was all in order.
Right, I did see that email.
And we don't need to know where the dirt's coming from?
I thought we did.
I think as it comes in, they have to give us.
Slips.
Slips.
Yes. Per your last, if I can interject, per, per your last, one of your conditions, yes, is that, once you, before you start hauling, you get that information.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you so decided, if you wanted that material tested, then they, they'd have, they could provide that information to you.
Okay, you have no idea where it's coming from?
They said within Worcester County, that, I know that's very vague. So I, I, I don't, they don't.
I know there's, some of the places they've gone is, um, over Highland Commons, they've, they had some, but I don't know how much material and I don't know anything.
Okay, I don't know, I apologize.
Do you know what hours you'll be doing the trucking?
Uh, we requested for 7 to 7. That was per your, per your last, that was one of the conditions in your last permit, so I just kind of honored that. And then Saturday as well, I think 7 to 5.
Yeah, there isn't a lot of residential that you're going to disturb coming up 290 though.
No, right, it's, correct.
Chris, and that, um, draft permit, the hour's already stated in there. Joe reviewed them to make sure they comply with the town's, um.
7 to 7 and 9 to 5 on Saturday?
9 to 5, not 7 to 5.
Yup, okay.
Okay. And when will you be starting? Ish.
Tomorrow morning, right?
You gave you ish.
Ish?
Ish.
Ish would be, hopefully before Thanksgiving. You know, there's some legal work to be done, but then we're hoping to, yeah, start construction hopefully before snow fly.
Okay.
Yup, that's the goal.
You did get the information in the email about the waiting period there?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Very interesting, but yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Very legally worded.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board or the audience?
Motion to approve the permit.
Seconded.
It's hard to take you serious.
It's hard to take me serious without this, who are you kidding? Yeah, well, just make it better, hang on. There, make it a little bit better.
Now she looks like the judge. Become the judge.
Nothing on.
This, no, that, yes.
So we have a, a motion and a second? Do I hear any other, any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you. So when I have that information, should I report back to?
Yes.
Secretary, get that information to you.
And just make sure you get it from someplace good.
Absolutely.
Please.
Understood.
Board of Sign.
Save yourself some aggravation.
There's a, there's a, there's a bit to sign.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's tagged.
Here I am looking, wrong file, yup.
So do I come to see you to obtain?
I can give you the permit.
Wow.
Yeah, I'll just put the copy and then, um.
I've come long.
So when do you think it'll be done? Like done, ish.
Goal is 2020, ish.
We like ishs.
Yes, probably, yeah, probably, it's probably, yeah.
A couple of years.
Yeah, probably two years.
Okay. Need the whole thing? Yep, multiple, just sweep it together. Thanks. Thanks, Mary. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, let me take a look here.
So here's River Road West, the first rotary, the second rotary. So that'll be the retail component, and then these seven apartment buildings, clubhouse, garages, gear garages. Here's the existing wastewater treatment plant. Something, dog parks over here. So your site kind of goes high to low, so we can be filling this, this portion of the site.
Right.
Where is that building in the back?
This one?
Yeah, behind the, um, when you come down and red coffee, red coffee, and then you look in the back, there's like a little barn.
Like a little butler building?
Yeah.
It's, that's the wastewater treatment plant.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really cool in there, if you like.
No, I'm good, I'm good. I just saw it and I'm like, huh, I wonder what that building is. So thank you.
That's the treatment plant.
Okay.
Alright.
Here's the, think here, give you orientation.
Awesome, thank you. Have a great night.
If you're interested, Joe or David or. If you're interested, Joe or David are typically happy to bring you.
Nope, good. Good. But thanks.
It's right there on your coat.
I think it's.
Don't make me put my mask back on. Just saying.
Well, um. You know, I believe you did send some minutes.
There are seven minutes.
I, I think I missed them today. I'm not sure. Has everyone else read them? I did not. I didn't have my lo- my book.
They're early Saturday. Yeah, we can just put them on Monday.
Yeah, why don't, yeah.
Yeah, Monday.
Alright.
Yep.
Um. Well, we've got a few minutes, but we do have uh, let me look on folder.
Hmm, I have just a question. Since we're on earthworks stuff, um, Lynn Sally.
Mm-hmm.
Can we talk about approving him?
Well, it's not on the agenda, but if you wanna.
Yeah. Okay.
You have a comment or?
Oh, I just, he looks highly qualified and as soon as we get that earthworks board filled, I think it gets better.
Yes. Yes. Want me to put that on for?
Yes, please.
I'm not sure about the fifth, but I'll look and see how long it is.
Well, I mean, that takes like two seconds.
Yeah, it wouldn't take very long, but. Just make sure I have it written somewhere. Alright. Uh, we also have um, appointments. Appointments of Margaret Sardel, Sardel and Jonathan Sardel um, to be appointed as the, what was it? Election workers.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have letters of appreciation to each of the town management study committee members. You wanna make a motion or just?
Okay, I think we already.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah.
So. Here. There's a couple for you. And then for you.
At Thanksgiving.
Alright. And then we have a letter thanking Kate Stacy um, for her work here with our treasurer. Um. Do I hear a motion to approve this one?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we also have letters to our highway superintendent and the highway workers, thanking them for hosting the open house. You should be thanking, should we be thanking your wife also?
Definitely.
Need to, need to get another letter directed.
And your dog.
Yes, my dog too.
So motion to approve. She made the motion.
Seconded, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Oops. Okay. I already signed this. This one's yours.
Thanks.
Alright. Thanks. Alright. And then the webmaster. We have a thank you note to the webmaster. Um.
Are they just random things or?
Um, he has resigned from the IT committee due to his work.
Okay.
Um. He will remain as the webmaster though.
And I was thinking ex officio sort of.
Yeah, and he, yeah, he wanted to, I think he wanted to continue so they, just to help with getting the website up.
Yeah. Yeah, he has trouble attending.
Yeah. Um, so motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I would like the seventeen-year-old, but apparently he can't serve officially.
No.
He's actually going to classes at Queen Sigamund and probably is qual- more qualified than most.
Well, how long is it till his birthday?
Um, I think it's a day. Not soon enough.
Really?
Yeah, it was, it was a little bit.
I think it may be the fellow that lives across the street from me.
Is it?
Alright, thank you. Alright, well, we've got about five minutes. You have a question or a comment?
I just wanna touch on the movie thing. Wanna talk about the movie thing for a second?
Uh, okay, well.
Well, depends. What do you have?
So there's a, there's a list on the Massachusetts website which talks about representatives for each um, community. If you wanna make the EDC that representative, that's what it looks like. Uh, I'll volunteer us to be it.
Thank you.
Oh, Chris Judy, Chris Judy's certainly a.
So if you wanna do that, if you wanna, I'll volunteer us to do that and I'll, I'll take the uh.
It's the chair of the board of selectmen, just historically here. That's the only reason why our name's listed there.
Ah.
And they had, they usually call annually and, and update it, but they, they may not have updated it.
So this, this is a list of.
There's a, there's a list of every city and town in the Commonwealth.
Right.
It looks like, this is the first page of what it looks like.
Right.
And um, there's a representative from each. And if I, if I pursue this like Peg thought, it might make sense. Um. And there's some tremendous incentives for the uh, the producers.
But what is the title of what these contacts are for? Is it just for anything film-related?
Representatives for. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Look at that sheet I just gave Peg that gives a little insight as to the uh, incentives the state offers the uh, producers.
Okay.
So basically, this is just the person they would touch base with to find out how things work in Berlin?
I'm sorry?
This is just the um, person they touch base with to find out how movie works in Berlin?
Well, I think it's more than that. It's probably the liaison, the person that'll liaise between the town, the state and the producer. And since the EDC really has little power anyway, whatever decisions we might recommend, they're gonna have to come to you anyway. But we can do the legwork and the recruiting if you want and then present that to you. We don't have enough to do. But one of your members decided to approach me. Peg!
Yeah, we, we asked her to, did we not?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was this person. Wasn't me. Yes, on behalf of the board, I asked.
Okay. Um. Probably because it's not on the agenda tonight, we can put it on for future agenda?
With some questions.
What's that?
With some questions.
Yeah.
Okay. But you appreciate starting the legwork on this, Peter, truly.
Thank you for the information. Do you want this stuff back or can we keep it?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks. Alright.
Shall we go?
Close enough?
Yeah.
Alright, um. So we're going to open the hearing, the liquor license hearing for our applicant um, at Highland Commons. Seeing how it's at seven thirty. Holy moly. So, do the Highland Commons, I opened the hearing. Highland Commons like to come up? Alright. Do you have a brief presentation?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Madam Chair, Andrew Upton, Commissioners. Also, Andrew Upton for the applicant. With me is Keith Hunter.
Hi.
The owner.
James Malgley, we own the shopping center.
Uh, so we have a brief description of the project. As you know, we look at the public need.
Don't be shy. None of us are older and don't do well.
As you know, we'll be looking at the public need and the character and fitness of the applicant for the license. We believe that the public need hasn't been, uh, in large part established by a previous hearing that granted the license to Liquor Barn. The board and, uh, at that time found there was a public need for a first-class, full-size, full-service liquor store located near the supermarket in this exact location that we are proposing to go. Public need and the public wants for a store that can enhance the customer experience at the commons, drive additional traffic to the commons. And we believe Highland Wine and Spirits is that store. Just a little bit of history, for the past five years, uh, Benderson's been working on securing a high-end liquor store for the shopping center. For the size and type of this shopping center, such a tenant is necessary component and would be a great complement to Market Basket. High-end liquor store will allow existing shoppers to remain in the center. In addition, draw new shoppers to the shopping center by providing products and service which does not currently exist. Uh, as you know, the space has been empty for over three years. This has hurt the mall owner and it's hurt the town. Uh, it's a four-year, it had been a four-year effort to get Liquor Barn open, including litigation, uh, but it didn't work. So now we have someone that we know, that we trust, who is really family and who can be open uh, to serve the public within a hundred days. Benderson has secured Highland Wines and Spirits. They're planning to open a high-end liquor store in fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five square feet of existing vacant tenant space in the same part of the plaza as Market Basket. This will create the synergies and convenience that makes the shopping plaza work for everybody. We think it would strengthen the commons as a whole and that fulfills a real public need. If Highland Wine and Spirits gets this license, the other applicant BJ's will continue with their mini-store and the town and BJ's and Highland Wine and Spirits will be able to maximize the use of two licenses for customer convenience, landlord rent stability and town tax generation. Uh, if BJ's can't sell Jack Daniels, we feel like they're really not that much worse off. They still have a captive audience liquor store that sells beer and wine. If we can't open, the commons has fifteen thousand square feet of empty space and consumers miss out on a full-service, first-class, full-service liquor store. And the residents in the town miss out on increased jobs and taxes. Uh, according to our conversations with Molly Reed, the assessor, our proposed store would generate annual tax revenue of an additional thirty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars every year. We estimate that employment would be twenty-five net new employees. Five of them will be full-time, three would be at managerial salaries and seventeen would be part-time workers. We, we don't believe the other applicant's program would generate any new jobs. Now a little bit about the character and fitness of the applicant. Highland's owned by Keith Leonard and Cynthia Leonard, who are related to the owners of the shopping center. Keith owns McKinley Wine and Spirits in Blazdale, New York, and Cynthia owns Colonial Wine and Spirits. They're experienced store owners. Uh, Colonial Wine and Spirits is a fifteen thousand square foot store similar to the one that we have proposed. And we have generated some photos of that store, just so you can get a sense of what type of displays, build-out, finishes and operation that they run. So as I said, they are experienced operators of full-sized liquor stores for almost twenty-four, twenty-four years. They have a thirty-five-page employee handbook that covers not only ID checks, but sexual harassment and workplace behavior. We will submit a copy of that for the record. Uh, their policy is to ID everyone under thirty and to only take four allowable forms of ID. Uh, they use a POS system that scans licenses. All employees will be TIPS trained. Store will use third-party compliance check services. In their existing stores, they have a terrific record of service and compliance. We believe we can offer a variety that smaller stores cannot. At almost eight times the square footage of the other proposed applicant, we would offer competitive prices because of our size, buying power and storage capacity. As you probably know, RJW is separate from BJ's, but they cannot, and they cannot use BJ's size or buying power to offer the same bulk discounts on alcohol that BJ's can offer on consumer goods. Highland has an existing program of wine education. They do wine tasting. They have a large section of wine accessories, including glasses, decanters, opening, openers, wine books. Uh, and they would do a first-class build-out. Uh, at fifteen thousand square feet, we would be completely different than a twenty-two hundred square foot store within another store. Both with, both within respect to its look and the type of quality of products to be offered. Just due to the size, we are able to offer significantly more products. Uh, I have here a list of what I believe are approximately eight thousand SKUs, which are individual items that they're offered.
Right.
For the record, just to show you how many different items that we will carry. That initial list is just the beers. This list is the wine and spirits.
Okay.
As a tenant of BJ's and having no agree- As a tenant of BJ's and having no agreement with the owner of the shopping center, should BJ's close, we believe RJW would have to close. Granting Highland the license will result in the filling of fifteen thousand square feet of vacant tenant space and would continue to improve the viability of the shopping center. If granted, Highland Wines will commence construction to fit out the store immediately, and we believe we could be open within ninety to a hundred and twenty days of your approval. Finally, we believe there's no additional noise, no light pollution, no unplant or traffic, no increase in rarityness, no saturation of liquor licenses. We are not near any schools, churches, rehabilitation facilities, or hospitals. This store is a reasonable size. It's from an operator with a great reputation, and it has some community support. We appreciate your listening, and with that, we're glad to answer any questions.
So, the license would go to the tenant? Or the Highland Commons?
The license would go to the tenant.
Okay.
The tenant would be the applicant.
And what was the, what was the name of the liquor store that you had?
Highland Wine and Spirits.
In, in, in...
Oh, and you are McKinley Wine and Spirits.
McKinley.
McKinley.
Do you have any questions? I know, actually, you answered all of my questions that I had with your presentation.
Well, we could go through the beer list if you want to discuss some specific...
I'd like to go home tonight.
This looks like you might be there all night.
I looked, just saying.
Yeah.
My questions were about employees and that sort of thing, so that was all covered.
So where would it go? I'm trying to pitch, pitch a where...
We have this...
So if I'm looking at Market Basket.
I actually have this site here. Just to point yourself, flexing is on the top, Berlin is on the bottom. This is Cabela's, Lowe's, and Market Basket. And then if you slide down, you've got TJ Maxx, Famous Footwear, The Alta Salon, Lane Bryant, and then Dress Barn is closing, and then the seventy-five hundred square feet next to it is also being part of the liquor store. So it's the next one, so it's right down within walking distance of Market Basket.
Thank you. There's nowhere to find them.
All right. If there are questions in the audience?
So the EDC's got a little statement. As most of you know, my name is Peter Hoffman, this is Paul Anderson on the board as well. I chair the Economic Development Committee in Berlin. This statement is made on behalf of the EDC. Information used by the EDC was derived in great part from the review of the applications provided by the Board of Selectmen to the EDC. During its regularly scheduled meeting last Thursday, the EDC discussed the benefits of both applicants for the available liquor license that the Board of Selectmen is considering this evening. The EDC considered the information provided by both applicants for the license and the projected economic impact of each of the proposed applications. We felt three factors were particularly important, given the EDC's mission of promoting Berlin's economic viability and supporting Solomon Pond and Highland Common Malls by helping them preserve their tenant base. First, as the board is aware, Highland Common Liquors will have nearly fifteen thousand square feet of space while RWJ Beverage, the BJ's applicant, will have just over two thousand square feet without the possibility of expansion within their store. The nearly seven-fold difference in size results in a comparable difference in projected direct real estate tax revenue to the kind of Berlin of thirty-one thousand dollars versus approximately four thousand. Second, the EDC believes that the Highland Common Liquors, Highland Commons Liquors, with its fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet location would offer a far greater variety and quantity of products than RWJ Beverage, the BJ's applicant. The larger, more diverse, and well-situated proposed Highland Commons Liquor Store would result in increased traffic for the Highland Commons Shopping Complex as a whole. As already mentioned, ensuring the viability of Highland Commons and Solomon Pond Mall is a key objective of the EDC's mission. Third, and last, the EDC also considered the projected hiring difference of twenty-five employees by Highland Commons Liquors versus less than six by RWJ Beverage, making the impact of Highland Commons Liquors a far more meaningful benefit to the community. Finally, based on these considerations, the EDC, Berlin Economic Development Committee, voted five-zero to recommend that the Board of Selectmen grant the unassigned liquor license to Highland Commons LQR LLC, which is the Highlands Common applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Mueller?
Speaking for myself, not for the planning board, I want to make that clear. I think the EDC has done a good job of evaluating the two projects and made a lot of important points. The only point I would add is that BJ's, the entity within BJ's, I think, is at a disadvantage because BJ's is a member club, caters to an audience that might be perceived by those who aren't members as not a place that you'd go independently to buy liquor. And so I think that's another advantage to this other proposal.
Which is incorrect, though. You can go, I believe you can shop there.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, the perception.
The perception is that, you know, it's a, it's a club. So I think that even though it is open to everybody, it isn't clear to people.
Right.
And that's a disadvantage.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to speak too? Go ahead.
As the only butter here. Feel like the larger store would certainly be more beneficial just because of the larger selection and taking up some of the empty stores that are up there and so...
Okay. Thanks. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate you having me. Do you want to speak?
Okay, all right.
Do you want to give this?
Yes, please. Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
So we're closing one hearing and opening the other, I guess?
It's at eight.
Oh, it's at eight. I think we do.
It's a legal public hearing.
Right.
Has to begin at the posted time.
Can we take a little break for a few minutes? Why don't we? All right. We're going to open the hearing for RWJ Beverage LLC. Michael Reardon is the manager.
Yes.
There's you. All right. Am I supposed to read these, Mary? This one?
You're good.
Okay. Good. All right. Then let's start with the presentation, if you have one.
Yes. Thank you for hosting us.
Thank you.
My name is Alex Fury. I'm an attorney, and my firm represents RWJ Management Mass LLC. And we're here in support of RWJ's application for a new annual all-alcohol beverages package store license, which will be an upgrade to their existing beer and wine license. As you know, they operate out of the BJ's wholesale over at Highland Commons. We've provided you with an executive summary of our argument, as well as a memorandum in support of that argument and some related case law that kind of just lays out what the legal standard is for the granting of licenses. I am here with Michael Reardon, as you know. He's the manager of the BJ's, I'm sorry, of the store currently located at BJ's. He's been the manager for over five years, for the last five years. I'm also here with Bill Kelly. Bill Kelly is a partner of mine in my law firm, and Mr. Kelly was the general counsel of the ABCC for over twenty years, and now he works at our firm. I will say he's an expert in this field. I'm also here with Warren Fields. Warren Fields is one of the principals and owners of RWJ.
He's a W on RWJ.
Yes, he is the W in RWJ. He's here in further support of our application. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kelly, and he's going to explain the reasons why we should be granted the full alcohol license.
Excellent. Thank you, Alex. Good evening, Madam Chair, and to you to the members of the Board of Selectmen. As Alex said, I'm Bill Kelly, and we're here to get you to grant the application filed by RWJ for a new annual all-alcoholic beverage package store license under Section fifteen of Chapter one thirty-eight. To that end, we prepared and gave to you this evening a submission that has two parts. One is an executive summary that walks you very quickly through what the standard is for you to make this decision tonight, that's laid out in the Massachusetts Liculaws. That standard is found in Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twenty-three, that is at Tab one. The second part of the submission tonight is a substantially longer memo that lays out in greater detail what the standard is, what court decisions exist that tell you what the meaning of the words in the statute are, as well as some very recent ABCC decisions passing on whether a local liquor licensing authority, like the Berlin Board of Selectmen, correctly identified the standard by which you must make your decision and whether you correctly applied it to a specific set of facts. And when you look at this in its entirety, I submit to you, this decision should be a direct, and I dare say, a simple one, that RWJ should get this all-alcohol license, and why is that? Well, let's work through the executive summary together. The standard is whether the application for this license will meet a public need and also be exercised in a manner so as to protect the common good. It's a two-tiered standard that requires a balancing. A need, public need, as used in this state law, has been the subject of two decisions from the appeals court here in Massachusetts, which are contained in the submission at Tab two and Tab three. In the first decision, the leading case, Ballerin Inc. versus the Boston Licensing Board, says there are a series of factors that you may properly consider in judging whether an application for a license meets the public need. And in the executive summary, we go through every single one of those and tell you very directly that RWJ meets every single factor and standard of public need. There's a second decision, and what are those? Number one, you take into account the number of existing dispensaries. And I think that's a key term here, is existing dispensaries, sellers of alcohol. Because this license became available because, three years ago, you took a gamble, and you gave a license to someone who's going to operate in a to-be-developed, open, empty space. And you took them at their word when they made a promise to you that they would get up and operating. And they made a pledge to the residents of Berlin and all the surrounding communities, that they would take this valuable asset, to which no one has a right, as laid out directly in Section twenty-three at Tab one. This license is a privilege, and with the privilege comes obligations and responsibilities. And I submit to you that the holder of the license, the preceded, failed in their obligations. They failed in their responsibilities, and they presented you a great demand on your municipal resources to oversee, to regulate, and then enforce the standards laid out in the state alcohol laws. And they became such a problem with their non-compliance, with the black-letter rules that guide what a licensee must do, that the state ABCC was forced to step in and pull the plug and revoke that prior license. So here we are, asking for that license. The number of existing licenses, when you say yes, and were you to say yes and give it to RWJ as they ask you tonight to do, you're not going to increase the number of actually operating licenses in Berlin at all. Why is that? Because RWJ is currently operating with just a beer and wine license. And the day you hand them the all-alcohol license, they're going to give you back the beer and wine license. The net change in the number of operating licenses is zero. No one else can say that, and in fact, the earlier application will increase not only the number of existing dispensaries and increase the demands on your municipal resources to be sure that they're operated in a manner so as to protect the common good. You're going to be, I submit, very, very busy. The bigger is not always better when it comes to alcohol. Bigger is not always better when it comes to alcoholic licensed premises. With bigger premises come bigger problems and bigger risks. And when you've taken a risk, and you've gambled already at a particular location, and that gamble was a bust, I suggest to you, you don't have any further obligation to take that risk again. I submit further, you shouldn't, as opposed to a request by an established business that has proven itself to you. You know RWJ here in Berlin. They've been operating here for five years. They've made promises to you, and they've fulfilled each and every promise. They recognize the privilege that a license comes to conduct business in Berlin. And they've fulfilled that responsibility, and they've not just taken out of Berlin, they've given back through their consistent, annual unwavering support of charitable organizations that are vital here to the residents of Berlin. And I speak specifically to their support of the Berlin Food Pantry. With the license going to RWJ, there's going to be absolutely no impact on the neighbors, on the traffic, or the noise. Why? Because the premises are staying exactly the same size. RWJ will manage, within the existing premises covered by their license, how they're going to also sell hard liquor as an adjunct to their existing business of beer and wine. No other applicant can tell you that. To the contrary, they're telling you something completely different, that they're going to take up fifteen thousand, approximately fifteen thousand square feet of space and pack it full of products and liquor. Sounds nice, but quite frankly, it's going to be a drain on your resources because you're going to have to oversee that. You're going to have to check, and your police department will have to be certain that there aren't any sales to underage, there aren't any sales to minors. And if they're selling NIPs, half-pints and pints of liquor, out of that store, each of which can be easily consumed in the parking lot or as someone's driving down the road, the window goes down and out goes the container, onto the roadways of this beautiful town of Berlin. Now, RWJ does not sell NIPs. They don't sell half-pints, they don't sell pints. They don't even sell single servings of beer. Why? Because they have made the choice not to use any refrigeration in their store, and they're not going to. So you have absolutely no risk of increased problems if and when you give RWJ this all-alcohol license. Another factor that you must consider in determining public need is the views of the inhabitants of Berlin. What do they think? Do they want another license? If so, who would they like to see it, get it? If so, who would they like to see it, get it? And to that end, we have tonight for you a petition signed by 126 residents of Berlin that support RWJ getting this all-alcohol license, so they can add hard liquor to the products they offer there at BJ's. And as was mentioned, RWJ is open to the public. It's not members only. And in fact, going back to when these type of licenses were first given and approved by the ABCC, the ABCC made sure that these were not relegated to members only. They must be open to the public. And it is, as the Chair accurately pointed out, a complete misperception, that you have to go pay and buy a membership to be able to go in and walk. I myself, just as a consumer, have patronized these types of establishments in Stonem, in Stoughton, in Danvers, without any challenge or question, when I wasn't a member. All you have to do is want to get there, see what they're offering, and buy it. In addition to the 126 residents of Berlin that signed a petition, we have an additional 280 other customers of RWJ that say they want RWJ to be able to sell all kinds of alcohol. And we have those for your consideration as well. So twice as many outside Berlin customers support it as Berlin residents do, which are numbered at 126. Another factor is the sort of operation that's going to carry their license. And it's very clear and very simple. All RWJ asks for tonight is to upgrade their license from beer and wine to all alcohol. They're going to use their existing footprint. You know RWJ. Berlin knows RWJ, and you know Mike Redden, the license manager. You know that he's on site, and he has pledged in this application that he will be on site 20 to 30 hours per week. He's not going to be phoning it in, I suggest. This is stark contrast to anyone else who proposes to be the license manager of a store and then tells you, "Well, I'll be there maybe about 10 hours a week." That's just not enough to fulfill the statutory responsibilities under the state alcohol laws in Massachusetts, to operate this license as if that person themselves were the licensee. When they can be open for over 70 hours a week, how, in anyone's common sense and life experience, can they keep an eye on things when they say they're going to be around at the most 10 hours? And he's sworn to this under oath in the application. RWJ has well-trained, experienced staff that have been working there for the past five years, and they'll continue to have this. The reputation of the applicant is another factor that you may properly consider in making this judgment. RWJ is the one with a proven track record that has made commitments and fulfilled them completely, and does not ask the town of Berlin and this board to take a gamble on anything. All we're asking is that you say yes to a proven business that I suggest to you is a sure thing. Promises have been fulfilled. Promises have never been broken. RWJ operates now in a completely built-out space. It's not empty, it's not vacant, and it hasn't been vacant, unlike others, for the past four years. In fact, he doesn't have a dirt floor, as exists right now as we sit here talking to one another. It's not a dirt floor of 15,000 square feet. If you vote yes tonight, RWJ has the chance to open within two weeks, assuming we can get ABCC approval within that timeframe. So it's entirely possible with RWJ that they'll be open for the holidays, to give that added opportunity and that added convenience for the residents of Berlin to where to go to buy this holiday spirits. You don't have that from anyone else. And in fact, Berlin stands to get, in calendar year 2018, three license fees for this single license. How's that? Well, the old licensee who got the license revoked by the ABCC in August paid you one. And when we get the license this year, if you vote yes tonight, and we can get the ABC to approve in two weeks, we're going to pay you a second license for this same calendar year, and then immediately file for renewal and give you a third license fee. So you're going to get triple the revenue. And no, I'd never heard anyone else tell you that and share that with you tonight. In addition to the Ballerin case, you have a Tab 3, a second appeals court decision that says Donovan versus the city of Woben. The further tells you the analysis you must perform in applying these Ballerin factors to public need. And the Donovan case directs the Berlin Board, like every other local liquor licensing authority, that you must make a particularized inquiry into the public need for the business that is proposed. And in this case with RWJ, just like the business that was the subject in Donovan, they're not going to be selling Nips, they won't be selling half pints, and they're not going to be selling pints of liquor and no single beers. And just like Donovan, when he made that pledge to Woben, the court said, "You can't deny that license application when a unique business model of that type makes the proposal to you. You must consider the public need for this particularized, unique business model that no one else in Berlin is using." I would close with procedural issues presented not by RWJ but by others. RWJ gives you no issues of compliance. There's no demand on your resources to oversee, regulate, and enforce. In fact, their past record, as they disclose in their application, is sterling. No violations, not so much as a complaint, and you won't hear anyone speak about that. And Mr. Redden can speak to that in more detail. That's not the same case with any other location seeking this license. But nothing but issues, excuses, lawsuits, and problems. And you should not believe that you're obligated to repeat that past, because as the saying goes, when we forget the past, we're doomed to repeat it. And you can avoid it tonight with a yes vote for RWJ. In addition, our application gives to you a plan of the premises that is a blueprint. It has the actual dimensions, how wide it is, how long it is, how tall the shelves are, how wide the shelves are. And the other applicant doesn't do that. They give you a document, throw it in as they rush together, pell-mell, to throw this application in, to say it's a preliminary plan showing elevations. It's basically a sketch. And the state alcohol law, which is at Tab 7, is very clear. When someone's looking for a license for premises that aren't in actual existence at the time you file the application, they are duty-bound, legally bound, bound by state law to give you a plan showing the actual dimensions. And I submit to you, I haven't seen it. If it exists, they haven't filed it, I presume that I have been provided everything you have been provided. That's a gaping hole, a glaring deficiency that is, I submit, fatal to that application being advanced by you. Finally, RWJ is very excited for this opportunity, and they continue to accept that this opportunity carries responsibility to be a good corporate citizen and to give back to the community. That has been the five-year history of RWJ. That will continue to be the future history of RWJ with the expanded capacity to help even more with their expanded product portfolio to include hard liquor. And that's why we're here tonight, asking you to grant RWJ's application and to vote tonight to say yes to RWJ, the very same way that RWJ has said yes to the town of Berlin. And therefore, tonight, we're hopeful that there will be a motion, a second, that will carry to grant RWJ's application for this new annual all-alcoholic beverage package store license. Our application is not for a transfer of a license that doesn't exist and hasn't existed since August, when the ABCC was forced to step in and revoke it. And with that, myself, Alex, Mike Redden are available to answer any questions you might have about our application.
Just one housekeeping, Mary, can I enter these into the record, the petitions? Thank you so much. And as Bill mentioned, we do, you know, Mike's been the manager for the last five years.
It's okay. I know the meeting's gone a little long, but I would like to take a couple of minutes and just, my name is Mike Redden. I've got over 30 years' experience in the beverage alcohol business in the state of Massachusetts. 18 years with the largest wine wholesaler in Massachusetts, and now 10 years on the retail side. I didn't get into this business to not take slight of the privilege of being a part of a beverage alcohol retail store on the wholesale side. I didn't feel as much of the responsibility as I do on the retail side. The three owners, Rick Keller, Harold Warren Fields, and Jim Deena, take it extremely serious about being civic-minded and being responsible. Their in the hotel business is their primary business, and they're extremely wanted, responsible, and very giving in their community. I learned a lot about their first responders, how they feed police and fire and the first responders in the community from the hotels. I learned a lot about what they've done. And we've done that just the same way. In Stonem, we put flags on all the veterans cemetery on the plots. We pay 100% of the responsibility there. In Danvers, the marching band had the opportunity to march in Pasadena in the Rose Bowl Parade, and we led the charge to help raise the money to make it so that the schools committee didn't have to be responsible. In Berlin, when I came to Berlin, our previous attorney, Fran Burke, who we lost far too early this past year, told me that the Berlin Food Pantry was near and dear to his heart and the people in the community. And we created this wine tasting event that's been very successful, and we're excited to do it again in the next couple of weeks. All I can tell you is, is when we came into this community, our goal was to hire from the community, to be involved in the community. We did an open house over at the old town hall. We sent postcards to every single resident in the town, saying, "Come on in and meet who we are." We did hiring events. We hired almost all of our opening staff from people from Berlin. We hired a couple of college students that were living at home and going to school in Worcester. We hired a gentleman who was a part-time firefighter. We hired people, stay-at-home dads, who were still working with us from the day we hired. We started. We hired school teachers from the community. Things changed, people leave, people come back. We've always wanted to reach out in the community of Berlin and make it something that we knew we, although we're a big, big business in theory, we still answer the phone every time it rings. Bud Freitas, who's with us tonight, is also one of our managers, and he was intimately involved with everyone here. All I can tell you is, my experience in the beverage alcohol business, I can get every product anybody needs within 24 hours. Sometimes that doesn't help the immediate, but a lot of that immediate consumption, consumer, the person that, you know, may drink that right away or in the parking lot, it's not a customer that we really care about. We also tips-train all of our employees. Every year, we mystery shop ourselves 13 times a year. I don't even know when they mystery shop. And if the employee doesn't check an ID, we check on our video surveillance, which is web-based 24 hours a day. And if we see that that person was in violation, they've signed an agreement when they come, and we terminate our relationship, because we take it serious. We're supposed to check every ID every single time. I would lie to you if I told you it happens every time, but I can tell you it happens 99% of the time. And we don't judge if you're 30, 40, 50 years old. We ask for your ID. That's really important to us. We take this as a privilege, and we take it extremely serious. We have wine tastings in the stores. We do everything everybody else does. We have a great assortment of craft beer. Sometimes I think we have more than we need, but we still have a great assortment. I'm here to answer every single question you have. I just wanted to give you a little speech about who we are and how much we appreciate the opportunity of representing the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
Again, they're very thorough.
I know. You think you've really covered everything that I had questions on.
Thank you.
The reputation of RWJ, are there other, do you have other stores?
There's five other stores in Massachusetts that they, that we manage. We have stores that are inside of BJ's, and then we have some freestanding stores in Dover, in Easton. We have a store in Secoak, one in Danvers, one in Stonem. And that's really, you know, that's who they are.
Is it RWJ who has the one in Northborough, the BJ's?
No, that's BJ's.
BJ's has that one?
That's BJ's, correct.
I wasn't sure.
Right across from the Wegmans there. That's, yeah, that's BJ's.
Right.
Different people. They have no say in what we carry.
Okay.
Or what we charge for people. Our prices are as good, if not better, than anyone in the area. With all my experience, I figured out how to buy the right price, the right inventory. 15% of all the inventory in the beverage alcohol business is, 85% of the volume is done in 15% of the items. We can hopefully scratch every itch that a customer has.
Okay. I just had a couple. I mean, the other group talked about additional hires and/or tax, additional tax revenue to the town. Can you speak to that?
I can speak to, we have currently seven employees. We hire as needed. I think that if we do add spirits, I think the volume will drive an extra employee. We are staying in the same footprint, so I don't see the need to hire more labor. The taxes is going to change because it's the same exact square footage.
Okay.
And neither is the commitment.
Thank you.
No problem. We do hire, our managers are benefit-driven employee managers. Our hourly's get bonuses, and they're well compensated.
We should get more taxes, Mike, to bring more volume with hard liquor.
The taxes, the state takes the tax on the beverage alcohol. It's really the way it is there.
Okay. Are there questions in the audience?
Mr. Kelly, maybe I misunderstood you, but you twice talked about the great track record your clients got, and the no issues of compliance. Did I get that right?
Here, in the town of Berlin, that's exactly correct.
Narrow it to the town of Berlin. You talked about it broadly. And in your client's application, there's three alleged violations. And it's pretty misleading to not make mention of that to the board.
Well, I don't think that's misleading at all, sir, and I think it's unfair of you to suggest that. That is fully disclosed under the pains and penalties of perjury in the body of the application. And I suggest that anyone who would characterize a fully disclosed in writing prior history of involvement with enforcement is perhaps not objective. We have made that disclosure. Berlin has had an impeccable record of no compliance issues compared to the flawed chain of broken promises at the other location, that I understood you got up to speak and tried to tilt the scales and put your thumb on the scale to urge the board to give them that license. So I suggest, sir, that it's not particularly an unbiased presentation that you have made. We have made the disclosure, unlike the competitor who had problems in the state of New York, and I question whether you made that disclosure in the body of this application.
Isn't that a different applicant, the first applicant, that failed, a different applicant than the current one?
It's, my comment was to the location, sir. And the location, as it exists, as I'm sure you recognize, and it's available to the naked eye, has done nothing in the past four years, to finish it out. There's a dirt floor there. That's a broken promise.
The previous tenant and the current applicant are totally different entities.
The landlord remains the same. The obligation to build out the space has been longstanding.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but Fran, James, and I are here on behalf of the Berlin Family Food Pantry.
Okay.
And we did just have some nice positive things I wanted to quickly say. It looks like a lot, but the phone's just there. As you know, and I actually refer to RWJ as the wine cellar of Berlin. As you know, the Wine Cellar of Berlin sponsors our annual beer and wine tasting event at the 1870 Berlantown Hall every year. It is by far our biggest fundraiser and a really fun community event that is for a great cause. Members of the Berlin community look forward to the event. The Wine Cellar donates 100% of the cost of the beer and wine used at the event, and all proceeds collected at the door go to benefit the pantry. and all proceeds collected at the door go to benefit the pantry. They also donate prizes that the pantry is able to raffle off at the event. They work closely with us to make sure it's a big success. There were some tough years with fundraising for the pantry, and without the help of the Wine Cellar, we would probably have to cut some of our services. Instead, with consistent support from the Wine Cellar, we have increased services with regular clients and also created programs in both the elementary school and middle high school levels to help our youngest community members in need. The Wine Cellar is more of a shop that is convenient for people to gather everything they need for an event at one place. They attract the kind of clientele that go there to shop for graduation parties, holiday parties, knowing that they'll get great service, great beer and wine at a lower cost, or even buy nice bottles of wine to bring to gifts to the parties. We witnessed the frustration at the town meeting a few years back where citizens were concerned about adding more establishments that sold nips and contributed to the growing number of trash we were seeing on the sides of the road. The Wine Cellar is not the kind of establishment, and adding liquor would not really encourage that kind of behavior. We have chatted with many of our peers, and no one seems concerned in the least about it. Most people were excited at the prospect of the ability to purchase liquor at the same time and place for their gatherings. We're in a time where donation requests are heavy, and we are lucky that our local businesses are generous and donate as much to as many causes as they can. Our bigger retail establishments try, but sometimes need to be a bit more selective as they are often approached by many diverse demographic areas. It is certainly a blessing that the Berlin Family Food Pantry can count on the support, generosity, and kindness that a business of the Wine Cellar can certainly support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? James?
James, hold it over for the Berlin Food Pantry. Just three points. I think the Wine Cellar helped us out when they didn't need to. They weren't going for the license five years ago. They did it just based on helping the community. This also would have the least effect on the town. They're already established, they're already there. We already have a lot of wine and liquor places and beer places around town for three thousand people. I don't know how many more we need. And then I think this vote is just where the town's priorities are. We're looking for more tax dollars or somebody who's going to help the community. So I think really this vote is about that.
Thank you. Anyone else? What about the board? Any other comments or questions? What is the pleasure of the board? Do we want to make a decision this evening, take this under advisement, as we have been told by our counsel that we can do?
I would prefer option B.
I think it'd be an answer, but...
Okay.
I prefer option B, to take it under advisement.
Okay. And do we want to put this on next week's agenda in order to make a decision? Okay.
I think we could do it.
Yep. All right. Okay.
Yeah, it's nice it's not already...
I know, it's on the... Mary, can you remind me?
No, I don't think it's so heavy.
I don't think it's that bad.
Well, maybe you could get a copy of the application.
Mary has it.
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. She sent it to us electronically, so she can send it to you.
Just talk about alcohol.
Hotel was on that night.
Hotel, okay.
With her license.
I knew there was some kind of an appointment, but I couldn't remember what it was.
But that's just year in line.
Right. And then the treasurer's coming in at seven-thirty to talk about health insurance. Doesn't look that bad. So why don't we plan to...
Do I have the time?
Do we need a whole half hour for the, one at seven o'clock, the all-alcohol?
One took fifteen minutes and one took a half an hour. I don't know.
Yeah, but this is for, oh, for the hotel.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, you want to talk about, talk about it at, say, seven-forty-five, fifteen minutes for the treasurer? Sound good? All right, seven-forty-five.
Great.
Put that down here. So do we need a motion to take this under advisement?
You could continue the hearing, and that would allow you to continue to take in testimony, or you can close the hearings and take the decision under advisement.
Close the decision?
Close the hearing.
You want to close the decision, or?
I guess I would maybe like to leave it open in case anybody else has anything to add. I don't want to close off
You don't want to close off the information?
if they have something else to... Yeah.
Then information I would say should be submitted to
The board.
Mary to be
That's fine.
to be disseminated to the board.
I just... Yeah. I just don't want to...
Just in case.
Yeah.
All right. So there's a motion to
Continue.
Continue the hearing.
Both hearings.
Both hearings, I guess, yeah.
Do you have the time and date? November fifth at seven forty-five?
November fifth at seven forty-five.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Is that going to be next week? You going to ask me that question?
No.
I will turn the light on.
Did you turn the light?
Yes, did you turn the light on?
Do you think I'm going to lie?
No, no, no.
We'll bring any leftover candy to you.
That you, that you turned the light on.
Kids are too old now.
Yeah, but on and off doesn't count. Just say, all right. Yeah, you can wear that.
Thank you for your support of the pantry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great...
Thank you, you too.
Yeah, I'll see you.
All right. Okay. Let's continue. I think we're to other new business. I just have one question for you. I did speak to June today about the budget kickoff. She said the fourteenth or the fifteenth at seven, well, I'm just saying seven o'clock, but the fourteenth or fifteenth, which is Wednesday or Thursday, is fine with her.
Because the thirteenth, we have our coffee, and on the sixteenth is the beer and wine tasting.
Right. So we really actually don't get the week off?
Next.
Right? If we do a budget kickoff, so.
Would it be downstairs, kind of like what we did with the department head meeting, or?
I think they've had it in here before.
Okay.
You know?
And you don't want that on a Wednesday, because you have way too many committees that meet on a Wednesday.
Not on a Wednesday? Thursday's fine. I thought Thursday was actually a good day for most people.
I think it's better than Wednesday.
So is that all right with the both of you?
Yeah. Can we do it like at six or something, or?
Yeah. Throw it out there.
See what works, if people can commit.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Bye, Peter. Thank you.
Do you want to do six o'clock? Can you make six? You know, one has difficulty coming in.
I'm always going to go earlier if possible.
Okay.
Yeah. I can, I'll put it on my calendar.
You suggested it.
I know.
So good?
Sure.
Okay.
This is the fifteenth, right?
Yes.
Oh, no, actually.
No?
No. I have the thing.
Yeah?
Yeah, we're going to Capitol steps that night at five-thirty. It's a, it's something Tim wanted to see. It's at the Bull Run.
Oh, oh, that's a nice place to go.
Comedy, political comedy thing, I think.
Okay.
Could you do the sixteenth during the day? It's Friday.
Yeah, but most people can't if you're going to have a budget kickoff.
Yeah, but the finance committee, most of them.
Could, could not.
Well, Davis around. It's Buzz that wouldn't be around, I assume.
You could ask him, but I mean, you also have Stan and...
Right, Stan wouldn't be available.
Michael.
Kinsberg.
Right. Well, so are we back to Wednesday? At six?
Because if you go into the following week and you hit Thanksgiving and that week is shot, don't bother.
Right. Right. Let me just check here.
You can do it without me, too. I mean, I don't...
The budget kickoff?
I don't have to be here.
No, the CBA meets that night. The finance committee meets that night.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, Wednesdays are horrible for committee meetings.
Those are the only two I know of, but...
Why don't you just do it on Thursday?
You have the FinCon there anyhow.
Actually...
I think it's more important to FinCon, you know?
You can on Thursday? Okay. You sure?
I'm sure, yeah.
All right. All right, then why don't we plan it for, what time, six o'clock?
Sheets.
You going back to Thursday?
Yes, Thursday, the fifteenth, that's six.
Yeah, who's meeting that night? Mary, Mary?
Voice goes downstairs.
Yay!
All right, we'll be up here. Nope, somebody forgot their water. I think it's Peter.
All right, that was all I had. Other business, new business, old business. That's about it.
All right, I have several. I'll go quick. Joe Flanagan and I are going to talk on Friday. Get some information from him about fire chief searches. I owe a phone call to the gentleman who I know who called here that I tried to call today, that I can't remember his name, but I bet you Mary does. The gentleman, he called, I've been playing tag with him. James something. Meh. I have it on my phone. Um, so I got to call him back.
About?
The fire chief search.
Oh, all right.
And then there was another gal, Kim. I owed her some information that I got to her, so I need to follow up with her on that so we can chug along. Peter's done. Let's see. I talked to Dave, emailed with Dave. He's going to put up a blinky sign, because I don't know what else to call it, to remind people to come to coffee with the selectmen, so he'll start that blinking on the ninth.
Okay.
And let's see. Library, I went to the library party on Saturday. It was a pretty good turnout. Mr. Agar spoke, Pat Smith spoke. My God, I can't remember his name. Bob spoke, Charlene spoke, and Harold Naughton was there, and he gave a certificate to the library.
The library itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like congratulations on ninety years. So no, it was well attended, considering the crap weather. There were quite a few people there, so I'm happy to partake. And Pitcher Man, I don't know his name either.
Marty.
Thank you, was there snapping off photos, so I'm sure that those will pop up somewhere.
Okay.
He's actually, on that note, he's asking for a place here that he can sort of dump all of these photos. So I thought I would touch base with Tom Galvin and see if he had any thoughts on where he can take all of these photos that he takes and put them so that they're available to whoever would like them.
Oh, you mean where to show them?
No, he has files upon files of photos that he's taken for Berlin. He's got home day photos and library photos, and he's, he's at pretty much every...
Are they organized at all, or?
They're very organized, actually.
Well, that means that we need to giddy up on the committee to look at space.
Well, it's, it's either, like, you know, we either get him a hard drive he can dump them to, or Google Drive is a possibility, but I'm afraid of space.
Killing out of space with photos.
It's just, I was going to check around and see if we could come up with a solution for that so that they're not lost.
And we still haven't gotten a planning board person to volunteer. That's up to many...
That's not for us.
Didn't you know what? We skip over them, because we can't dally.
Yeah, let's just keep going.
I know.
If they want to play, yeah, if they want to play, they'll play.
I'm not sure. I mean, I, I actually was there when they talked about it, so I'm not sure there was enough interest. They could even be someone that is called upon when there's something in particular that planning board should be involved in, rather than have them be at every meeting.
Then let's just get that going, yeah.
And there were actually, well, there were two employees that volunteered, so we could just
Tom Galvin, George Pendergast.
Could just let them both be on it.
Yep. So let's roll.
So, I don't know if we need to officially appoint them, or?
Who else do you have other than George and Tom Galvin?
Uh, Joe and Dave.
Joe, I think was one, Dave.
Okay. Joe says four.
Building inspector, oh, um, I didn't hear, did we hear from CPC?
Well, the fifth one would have been signing, right?
Yeah, that's right. No, I never did hear from CPC.
Or Dave Westerling? Did he put in?
He should, somebody from there should be on. They were supposed to get somebody...
I thought there was something from Dave.
We did. Tim talked to him. Tim came back in here, didn't he, and say he had...
I don't remember.
They would get it at... Their intention is to appoint.
Well, you might want to send out an inquiry then, just to make sure somebody from capital planning or...
And you know what? Give it a cutoff date, this Friday. It's not like people don't know about it. So volunteer or don't volunteer, and then we just chug along without you, and then if all of a sudden you get left out because you have space, or you want space, I'm sure you'll show up to the committee.
Okay.
But we can't dally.
Okay.
And then we can just do letters on Monday.
Yeah.
Sign, boom, done. Giddy up.
Want that on the, oh, fifth, okay.
Yeah, because that won't take long. It'll be like your standard letter that you have with everybody else.
No. It'll be just an appointments.
It's a subcommittee, but it's a couple of weeks, but it doesn't really matter.
Right, right. Right.
Yep.
And we'll give them some guidelines on what we're looking for, so they don't...
Well, I mean, Mary's got the guidelines in a...
A mission to, there's a mission, yeah, that was very short, but that's how we average it.
No, I mean, the input from everybody, I guess.
Oh, I have that, too, yeah.
Yeah.
There wasn't a lot, but yeah.
Yeah, and anybody can go to these, so they can ask, so...
Right. Right. Okay.
And they're to be done by the end of the year, so you wouldn't want a website created for them and like any other...
Uh... If it takes longer, then we'll
We'll make it.
figure it out.
We'll do it.
All right, well, I've lost, oh, here it is. Did we cover everything?
Yep, I told you I'd keep you through.
Okay, so we're good? All right.
Thanks for letting me wear my mask.
Well, I think it was a little hard to hear you through it, but...
Well, maybe that was purposeful, just saying, okay.
All right, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Seconded.
All in favor?
Adjourned.
Aye.
Aye.